Well, it's pretty magnificent, isn't it? With lots of tall trees and deep rivers and lots of really interesting things to look at.
Pretty amazing waterfall right over here.
Right, the waterfall over there? Yes.
It's majestic and beautiful.
It's majestic.
Which is one of the answers, as I always, as I said earlier. There are many possible answers. Please follow the arrows again. This is the Grand Canyon of Yellowstone. For many years, this 24-mile-long canyon remained unseen by all but Native American peoples and European, European, for traders. It wasn't until 1869 that organized expeditions documented, as explorer David E. Folsom noted, this masterpiece of nature's handiwork. I'll now give you a fun fact. Did you know that Yellowstone National Park has the largest concentration of free-roaming wildlife in all of the lower 48 states? The park has 50 mammal species, 311 bird species, 18 fish species, six fish, six reptile species, and four amphibian species. Sorry. And that's all we have. I hope you enjoyed it.
Nice talk. Have to give them back, huh?
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. What a fantastic presentation. I'm wondering, kiddos, if you're sticking around, if any of our board members have questions for you. Can you answer any, do we have any questions? All right, Ms. Keen.
I have a question about that arrow, and then I looked at the right spot and it turned into kind of a compass shape. How did that happen?
You can hold on the spot right there, or you can click on like something, like a tab or something. But when you click on it, it had, it will have like an arrow that's placed because we want you to look over there, and the compass is just like circling where the area is.
That's really cool. So sometimes do you set that up, or do the teachers set that up, or some of each?
All right.
Really cool. Yeah, thank you.
Set up both ways. Yeah. Any other question? Yes, Dr. Anderson.
I just want to acknowledge and admit here on public TV that as a science major, I'm sorry to say, I think I failed the test.[167.56][167.56](laughter) I'll have to, it's a reminder to go back and study up. So, thank you for your interest in science. It was wonderful. I appreciate it.
All right. Well, let's give one more round of applause for all of our students.[181.12][181.12](applause) We all do need to go study our science a little bit more, but your knowledge and enthusiasm is inspiring. So, thank you, and thank you to your teachers and your principals for setting that up, too. All right? We're so glad you're here. And now, we're going to do lots of really exciting stuff, like talk about policies and health insurance and life insurance. So, if you'd like to learn a little bit about that, you're welcome to stay. If you have bedtimes or homework or just about anything else, you are welcome to say goodnight as well. Thank you again.
Yeah. I wasn't expecting like as you move, I just, I thought it was like a...
Okay.
They wouldn't have told me to move. I don't know if I would have figured it out.
Like that waterfall.
All right. Well, it's a little, a little hard to follow that. But, Dr. Anderson, I think first on the agenda are, are some policies. And our first is under community education, and so I'll let you start.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. There are a number of policies that are presented here tonight for you. The first one, I'll give a brief overview on, and I believe Dr. Johnson will give a brief intro to the other ones. Attached is Policy 920 for your consideration. The policy was reviewed by appropriate program directors, and the policy was reviewed by the Policy Committee of the Board at the April meeting. So, this is Policy 920, and it refers to use of school district facilities and equipment. There are some minor modifications that have been made to it, but was updated with some additional information that we thought would be helpful to provide a policy that gives us stronger guidance on our use of district facilities and equipment.
All right. Thank you. So, the recommended action is to approve School Board Policy 920 as presented. Is there a motion to that effect?
Chair Johansson, I'd move that we waive the first and second reading and move the policy forward as, as listed.
Okay. Is there a second for...
I'll second that.
All right. So, Policy 920 has been moved and seconded to for first and second reading and final approval. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor of approving School Board Policy 920 as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. All right. Motion carries. Thank you. And thank you to the Policy Committee. I know that was fast, but you guys work a lot harder and longer in talking them through. All right. And then, Dr. Johnson.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Anderson. Attached are policies for your consideration. The policies were reviewed using the MSBA model policies. The policies were also reviewed by appropriate program directors and building principals, and the policies were reviewed by the Policy Committee of the Board at the April meeting. There are Policy 603 instructional goals. There was no substantial changes to this policy. 613 instructional curriculum development and adoption. There was a change to the title. No substantial changes to the content, however. 613, we added regulations which we previously did not have to better align our practice with the MSBA policy and current world's best workforce legislation. Some of the content was used from Regulation 623. 623, school accountability is a name change, eliminated some of the language from the policy and moved it into the regulations. In Amendment 623 regulation, created regulations to better align our practice with the MSBA model policy and current world's best workforce, workforce legislation. The recommended action is listed below.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Johnson. So, the recommended action is to approve School Board Policies 603, 613, and 623 as presented. Is there a motion to that effect?
Chair Johansson?
Yes.
I would like to move that we approve Policies 603, 613, and 623 for their first reading in hopes that we could bring the policies to either the Teaching and Learning Committee meeting, or perhaps to a work session just for some discussion and to answer a couple of quick questions.
All right.
I would second that.
All right. So, Policies 603, 613, and 623 have been moved and seconded for first reading to be discussed in further detail and at a teaching and learning or board work session. Is there any discussion? No? Okay. Sometimes we do that, sometimes we move policies forward for all, sometimes we bring them back for discussion. Okay. All those in favor of approving School Board Policies 603, 613, and 623 for first reading as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Okay. Motion carries. Thanks so much. Okay. And then, I think next is Mr. Westrom and some finance and business reports.
Yes. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. This evening, we have one item, the monthly financial reports. And enclosed within your packets for your review and information are the following: financial reports as of March 2018, the Student Activity Fund Report, the Investment Summary Report, an analysis of our financial reports, a statement of revenues, and a statement, statement of expenditures. Once again, this is through March 2018, and the district business offices reviewed this information in great detail and actually used it as a portion of planning for the upcoming 18-19 budget. And I'll just make a few comments that normally we would ask the board to approve our transportation contracts this evening, but because we have a special meeting scheduled for next Monday on the 21st, we thought it made more sense to bring it to the board on the 21st. And the legislative deadline is next Monday, the 21st as well. So, at this point, our budgeting process for the 18-19 school year is going fine, and our current operational expenditures are in line with what the board has approved. So, with that, if there are any questions, there's no school board action required.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Westrom and our finance department? We'll eagerly await the news next Monday. Thank you, Mr. Westrom. All right. And next, we have some human resources recommendations.
Yes. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Anderson. I have two items this evening. The first one being the Authorization of Life and Long-Term Disability RFP Process. National Insurance Services, on behalf of Voiseta Public Schools, conducted a formal request for proposal for group life and long-term disability insurance to remain in compliance with Minnesota statute. The RFP was released in February and distributed to 13 carriers with responses received in March. Evaluation of these proposals took into account, but were not limited to, the following criteria: compliance with bid specifications, contract provisions, premium rates and guarantee periods, proposer's ability to adequately service the group's employees, and ease, cost, and effectiveness of transition from current carrier. After providing last look and negotiating with the incumbent carrier, Cigna, National Insurance Services recommended district administration remain with Cigna as our life carrier and transition to Madison National Life as the long-term disability carrier effective July 1st, 2018. Both carriers have confirmed to matching all current benefits and guaranteeing their proposed rates for a period of three years. The approximate total annual district premium savings will be around $75,000 as a result of this RFP process. The recommended action is listed before you.
All right. Fantastic. So, the recommended action is to accept this, accept Cigna as the life insurance provider and Madison National Life as the district's long-term disability insurance provider effective July 1st, 2018. Is there a motion to that effect?
So, move.
Second.
It's been moved by Andrea and seconded by Chris. Any discussion? No? Okay. So, all those in favor of the recommended action related to our life and long-term disability insurance, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. No tensions? No, okay. So, all those in favor of the recommended action related to our life and long-term disability insurance, say aye.
Aye.
Posed no. Submissions?